So we may conduct the people's business without interruption. Commissioner Ray Davis will give the invocation and lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would pray. We hope that the Father, we thank you for our country, our state, our county, for most of the neighborhoods and communities that make it up. Thus our meeting tonight, that the decisions will be right of the county, the people of both counties. To most of all, Lord, we ask you to fulfill us all on many things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I say to the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Minty White will call the role of the Commissioners.
I, Venus Minty White, present as Clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the role for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman David Bennett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Toby Connor.
Aye.
Commissioner Ray Mosley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anthony Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Nick Newkirk.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmy Rushing.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ray Davis. I have determined that we have all members of the Board of Commissioners present, therefore we have a quorum to conduct business for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. I now yield the floor back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Venus. Okay, first up, we've got our Solicitor General, Ms. Catherine Sumner is going to give us a presentation on a proposal for new discovery software.
Good evening, Chairman Bennett, Commissioners. Thank you all so much for having me this evening. And I do have a presentation to give to you. I'm going to try to keep it as brief as possible, but certainly want to provide you with any information that you may have questions about or just in-depth about this proposal. So my name is Catherine Sumner. I've met all of you at the budget retreat, but just to let you know, I am your Solicitor General here for Bullock County. It's my honor to serve in that role. And in that capacity, I serve as your lead prosecuting attorney for the State Court of Bullock County. And in that court, we process cases all the way from speeding tickets up through DUI and family violence offenses. In roughly the calendar year of 2024, when we took together our criminal case counts and our traffic counts, we had 8,112 new cases brought into my office during that calendar year. So my office is staffed with myself. I have a chief assistant solicitor, an assistant solicitor general, my victim witness director who is here, Ms. Heather Rogers, as well as our legal secretary. So we are a staff of five that handles these cases from the time that they come in from the law enforcement agencies to going out in discovery to the defense bar and/or pro se defendants through the process, the prosecution process, conviction and appeals. We have sat down and we've looked at ways that we can try to make our operation more efficient, as well as in doing so, not compromising the integrity of the security systems that we have or the quality of the service that we're providing. I serve at the pleasure of the citizens of Bullock County. I'm very thankful to do that, and I want to make sure that that service that we are providing is always going to be top-notch, but we are always looking for ways to make that more secure as well as more streamlined. So right now with our discovery process, the way that we are handling that, when a case is initiated through a law enforcement agency, and then we work with all of the agencies in the county, so you have the Sheriff's Office, the Statesboro Police Department, you have the Brooklyn Police Department, Portal, DNR, Georgia State Patrol, any agency that writes citations or makes cases in this county, we deal with. And right now, when they make those cases, they turn them over to the Clerk of Court's Office in way of the citation or the charging instrument. That then opens a case in my office, and we start preparing for the discovery process. We request from those agencies to provide us with the evidence that they have in that case. We then take that in, we process it in our intake process, and we then go through disseminating that to either the defense attorney representing a defendant or a pro se defendant if they are in fact representing themselves. What this has created is we've gone into a system where we're now doing electronic discovery, which is wonderful, because the way that this used to happen was they would print out paper copies of this evidence, they would bring it to our office, we would make physical copies of whether it was a VHS tape or a CD, DVD, whatever that is, and copies of the paper, and we would serve that manually to the defense bar. We have streamlined that down to where we are doing electronic discovery now, where we are getting that in from the agencies in various ways. We're formatting it and we are sending it out through various links to these defense attorneys and/or defendants. What we've come to is that we've got multiple agencies that are providing that discovery in a multitude of ways. We have some agencies that are bringing us external hard drives, which we are then downloading, uploading, formatting and sending out. We have some agencies that are sending us information through Dropbox. We have some agencies that are sending us information through Axon. My proposal tonight is for our office to become fully integrated with Axon. And I'll give you kind of the benefits of that. What that is going to do is to create a situation where we are not having to take in discovery from these various sources, that everyone in law enforcement, those agencies, would be set up with what is called, and I hate this terminology, but what is called an ingestion portal for Axon. We would have Axon training available to these agencies, the ones that are not currently utilizing Axon. They would set them up with an Axon account, and then their discovery could be dropped directly into that Axon account, and it would automatically appear within my office. That cuts out any middleman on the preparation and serving of that discovery. We then get that, the Axon system formats it, and then we are able to send it out in what's called a dissemination portal to the defense attorney and/or pro se defendant, so it's never leaving that one-stop shop. So that eliminates any potential issues with security on that, again, eliminating those middlemen, but it also decreases the amount that we are spending per month in the discovery process. Right now, for my legal secretary, it's taking her about two weeks out of each month to download all of this information, process it, put it into our system and get it uploaded to the parties who are looking for that discovery. That is an extraordinary amount of time for this process, because she does also handle all of the front office business and things like that. So our goal here is to secure the process, eliminate those third-party accesses, and to create an agency-to-agency prosecutor's office to defend, one-stop shop for us to do this discovery. The other thing that it will do is when we're taking in discovery now, it is where we are getting videos from different formats. We're having to format those into players where they are viewable for the defense bar, and then we're having to send those out. This Axon system would do that automatically, so that it's going to give them a viewable format as soon as we send it out to them through this Axon link. The Sheriff's Office is already utilizing Axon. We do have a free account set up in our office to exchange discovery with that agency. We've been very happy with how that has worked, and so what we're trying to do is to fully integrate with that. And what it's going to create is a situation where we're able to eliminate other third-party vendors and subscriptions where we're currently retaining our evidence, as well, it's going to cut down on that time for the discovery process within my office. In looking at what we're spending in overtime, when we come into what the justification for this software is, we're roughly running overtime right now at about 213%. Now, we are still under budget for the fiscal year, but that overtime is almost exclusively in this discovery process. So we want to cut that down as much as possible. We also have an eye towards hopefully going paperless, where our evidence management is stored in this system. It is monitored through, it's built for law enforcement, and it is monitored through that. And so that way that we would be able to eventually eliminate the paper files, the supplies that go into that, and the time and labor that goes into building those paper files. It does, and the good part of this is, is that I am not asking you all for any money tonight, right now. What I've talked with the Axon reps and individuals is that this would be a situation that we could start as early as September the 1st. That would be the contract date. For the first year, we would have an upfront cost of $5,000 associated with getting these agencies set up, getting their training done, getting them ready to drop this discovery into this portal for us. I've had the opportunity to meet with members of the Law Library Board and to discuss potentially proposing to them the covering of that upfront cost, and they have given me permission to submit that proposal. So what we would be asking from the county for the first year is nothing. That would be, we're hoping, would be approved through the Law Library Board, and that upfront cost would be covered, and then we would be looking at contract year two and then on. It does, in negotiating this with the Axon reps, we are looking at a contract term of 10 years. And I also understand, I serve at the pleasure of the citizens of this county, there's no day that is given to me. And so I don't want to put the county in the position of me contracting into something that is going to extend past my potential tenure. So when speaking with them about that, we have also negotiated a term of this contract that if at any period of time, we decide that this is something that we are not utilizing or that it isn't giving us the cost benefit that we're expecting it to give us, that we would give them a 30-day notice, and we would be able to cancel the contract without acceleration or without penalty. So even beyond, if I am not here during year nine, if the county decides that this is no longer something that we can justify allocating funds for, then we would be able to give them that 30-day window, and we would be able to cancel the contract without having to utilize any of the other contract prices. So that is essentially the goal of this. I've been given quotes for a flat annual fee for years two through 10, and I've also been given a quote for years two through 10 based on a 4% inflation adjustment each year. The contract price has remained the same. For years two through 10, it is $162,044, which, when I was first given that amount, I about fell out of my chair. But when I break it down, if you go through the even allocation per month for years two through 10, it breaks down to roughly $17,449.36 per year, at a cost of about $1,455 per month. Again, right now, in overtime alone, we're running right around $10,000. I'm hoping that while I know realistically I'm not going to be able to eliminate overtime completely, because we do run some days with court dockets and victim meetings, we run over, but that will significantly decrease that number, as well the cost associated with the supplies that we are having to bring in in printing, in building files and things like that. And I do believe that overall, this is going to be of benefit cost-wise to the county. So what I'm asking for is permission to go ahead and pay that $5,000 upfront to enter into this contract in September, and again, those funds being secured through the Law Library, and then to go ahead and get our office set up with this and see how it is working. I hope that it works the way that we're anticipating for it to. But again, if for some reason we see that there are issues associated with it, we can definitely take a step back and reevaluate. But that would give me the ability to next year, when I do my budget proposal, to build this in. This was not built into any proposal for this year, which is part of the reason why I'm not asking you all to bear any upfront cost associated with it, but we did not start looking, or we were not approached or started looking at this company until after the proposals were sent in. So that's kind of why I'm here mid-session to ask for this. But that's, I'm just asking for permission to be able to continue with the negotiations with them and to hopefully get started and running with Axon as of September the 1st.
Since we're talking about doing a lateral transfer of funds from the Law Library to purchase this first year, do we need to actually have a motion and a vote to do that?
Well, I think the Law Library Board would determine that.
That is correct. I would submit the proposal directly to Judge Muldrew and John Welch, and they would submit that proposal to the remainder of the Law Library, and then that vote would come through them.
So the only thing that we really need a motion on is just to continue negotiations with Axon, is that correct?
And...
So the contract will be with your office, though, right?
It would be. Yes, sir. Permission for me to enter into that agreement with them.
Any other questions or discussion from the Board of Commissioners? So not hearing any discussion here, I'm going to ask, do we have a motion that we can make here?
I make a motion to grant permission to continue negotiations.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Before we go any further, I'm going to go off the script here for just a minute. Y'all bear with me. Look to your left and right. If you see a seat empty next to you, will you raise your hand up? Got a lot of folks who are standing up in the back. Y'all welcome to move up and sit in some of these seats if you want. If you want to stand up, that's fine, but I don't want nobody saying that I didn't let you have a seat. All right, so moving forward here, before we entertain a motion to approve the zoning agenda, do we have any discussion or modification desired by the county manager or the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have one announcement in reference to the zoning. Do wish to offer my apologies to everyone in the audience and to the board. We were made aware this morning that we failed to meet the timeline for public notice of tonight's agenda, and we're going to go through the process as we normally would. Everyone will have a chance to speak that normally would. We will ask that the board motion, make a motion to defer each item at the end of the process until the August 5th meeting. At that time, we will be back on track. Again, my apologies.
So just to clarify for everybody, we have to provide legal notice to the public organ, the newspaper, within a certain amount of time, that we're going to have a zoning hearing. We found out this morning that that announcement was not made within the legal window. So we can legally not hold a vote on these zoning issues tonight. So what we're going to do is we will allow everyone to come up and speak that wants to speak, either for or against. We will not have a vote. Next month, on the 5th of August, we're going to do this again. You're welcome to come speak again.
I think it should just be void period now since somebody failed.
I don't think legally we can do that. So, and the legal advice that we've been provided is that we go ahead and allow the people that are here to speak, so that's what we're going to do. So with that being said, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So movement.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Pope, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Extend also my apologies for failure of oversight on that, and just again, wanted to make sure that we follow procedure and make sure that whatever vote you cast is acceptable in the eyes of zoning procedure law. Item one is a rezone request by Turtle Landing Investments LLC. It's located at St. Cole Road at Ephesus Church Road. Number of acres in request is approximately 71. The rezoning request is for an R80 residential 80,000 square foot lot, which would be the minimum. As you see on the map here, this is the approximate location of the parcel. And here's the current zoning map of the parcel. The portion highlighted is really the parcels involved in the rezoning, but we do have an updated site map that I will show you in just a moment. Again, highlighting the location, this is an aerial of the property, and this is a sketch plan, or sketch that was proposed by the applicant, of which they're requesting to develop 22 lots. As you see, as the applicant proposes, this would utilize St. Cole Road for multiple access points onto the property, create three additional lots on the east side of St. Cole Road, of which staff recommends a couple of conditions with this if you all were to approve it. We'd again recommend the conditions that it would be a single access to the majority of the development.
Can I speak to that?
Sir, not right now.
That's not correct. It's not Muldrew access on St. Cole Road. There's only three lots. There's an interior road will be at Ephesus Church Road.
As this sketch plan is presented, I view two interior roadways coming from St. Cole Road and two interior roads.
If you go out on St. Cole Road and St. Louis, we've brought up three lots.
Sir.
I've got a plaque in my hand.
Sir, you'll be given a time to speak.
But I just wanted to correct the misinformation, sir.
So with that, planning and zoning recommended a denial by majority vote, five to zero vote. And again, we recommend a number of conditions if approval is granted. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you.
Is there anybody here that's to speak in favor of this?
Well, I guess the applicant is here to speak, Mr. John Spandl.
Okay. I found this on the web for John.
Always listening.
It is.
Chairman Bennett and Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to be here.
You're welcome.
We proposed a subdivision out on Ephesus Church Road with three lots facing St. Cole Road. The rest of them are accessed off of an interior road off Ephesus Church Road. This is not an expense to Bullock County. You're not providing roads. We provide our own roads. We're now zoned Ag 5, which we can use, but we prefer to have two lots where we have Developer who is here with me tonight will install a water system. The county has a fire station, I am told, 5.1 miles away, and I have been told there's probably another one coming closer on Union Church Road. Brooklyn, it's in the Brooklyn School District. I've already sold some of this property. It's close to Evans County line, because their children want it to be, they want their children in Pinewood Christian Academy, which is 12 miles away. It's a very close school, and a lot of them go there. The homes that will be built will be 1,200 to 1,600 square feet. We're projecting, you know, very nice homes. It's be a... They're all stick-built onsite, nothing mobile, nothing modular, everything will be stick-built. We project that the highest and best use for our property is an R80. We really, and it, there will be, we have one well on the property already, three more wells will be drilled to provide water for the homes. We'll have enough gallons per minute to add supplemental water to a fire truck if it were involved in that area, at least 500 gallons per minute, which is a lot of water. And I think we have plotted 27 lots, actually. We would like to build 25 homes on it. This would be done in like four stages over a four-year period. They all won't come in at one time. There's sort of a, there's sort of a negative attitude about the housing shortages in Bullock County. You know, smart planning, like we're trying to do, helps alleviate that. There is no subdivisions in that area south of the I-16 301 intersection. I mean, you've got two or three Tier One plants right there. You know, we're just providing housing. We didn't bring them in. You know, we had nothing to do with it. The growth is here, whether we want it or not, it is here. We're going to have to provide for it. If you, I'm sure you've noticed, I'm assuming that's Georgia Power, they're putting in major power lines from that substation they just built right there off of I-16. Somebody's planning to do something. It's major power. I don't expect, I hadn't seen that, you know. You know, I've heard something about uncontrolled water use. Well, it's certainly not from a subdivision or from Ag use. Your uncontrolled water use may come from those 20-inch wells that was drilled for Hyundai. That's not our problem. We're not using that kind of water. But, you know, we present to you folks that, you know, growth is here. You can't stop it. It's coming. It's opened. So you might as well plan for it, and that's what we're trying to do, is to develop a subdivision that's good for the area. I mean, you've got 25 homes, you've got a good paved road. That's not much travel, and it's a very short distance off 301 to this property, a very short distance. It's not like we're creating a traffic hazard for anybody. It's easy. It's there to go. We know we have a good idea. We know it's needed. You know, we have people waiting for homes to be built there if we can do it. So what we're asking for the Commissioners to do is to prove our subdivision. We think it'd benefit Bullock County. We don't think it's anything a negative point. We think it's good for Bullock County. And if I could, I would ask for Mr. Clayton Randall, our developer, just to say a couple of words, if I could do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Clayton.
What I'm looking at is, I'm not looking to put 100 houses in an area. I'm looking at 20. That's it. I'm also looking at me a place to live out there as well, along with my own children. I'm looking at it from this perspective that I can get ahold of it now and be able to fit this minute amount of houses out in this area. Or someone else with a whole lot more money than they ever thought about having will sooner or later come in and put it on half-acre lots, because we won't always be here. Whenever they come in and they put it on half-acre lots, how many houses can you have in this area? We don't, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want it where it's half-acre lots either. I see where most of y'all are coming from. I'm looking at it, there's 20 houses. We won't be sitting there putting it on the St. Cole Road itself. It'd be up here, over here on Ephesus Church Road, closer to where there's only, it's not really going to affect a whole lot of people going straight over there to 301. They're going to take the quickest route out of that area. That's the thing. All right, we go back to worried about the groundwater that's going on. You have it with agricultural usage itself causes a dimple effect on the irrigation system, is far more extracting on the water supply than the neighborhood would ever be. I don't know how many people you're going to have sitting in flesh and oil at all at the same time. You've got to keep that in mind. But like I said, I'm only trying to do 20 or so houses. That's it. We've got on two acre lots. That gives enough area for someone to be able to have a garden in their backyard if they wanted to. I don't know, that's...
And there are protective covert covenants on this property.
And I'm not putting a trailer park in this place.
You can't have any undesirable stuff. You can't park your pickup truck in the side yard and fill it up with milk jugs. They're recorded, it's enforced, so we're good to there. We thank you very much for your time, for allowing us to come, and we'd like for you really considering, look at what we're doing. Just don't turn us down without really looking at what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Is there anybody that is going to speak in opposition to this rezone? So I've got seven folks on here that are signed up to speak in opposition of this. What I'd like to do is unless y'all just have one person that wants to come and speak for 10 minutes, is just to offer you all two minutes apiece to come up and speak. So I've got seven folks on here that are signed up to speak in opposition of this. What I'd like to do is unless y'all just have one person that wants to come and speak for 10 minutes, is just to offer you all two minutes apiece to come up and speak. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call them.
We're ready. We'll call you up and, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Judy McCorkle.
As Judy is handing out these packets for our points we have to speak on tonight, hopefully to get this rezoning stopped. I ask for everyone that's here tonight that are, that are against the, uh, the rezoning on Ephesus Church Road, if you will, stand up for me and, and show how many is here for this, that are supporting the stopping this rezoning. And if you're, if you're here and you're standing in the background, thank you, raise your hand, okay? Thank y'all. Appreciate it. Want to make a few points that we have in your packet here, if you follow along with me. The potential impact on the surrounding area and community of this rezoning here. The impact on transforming rural farmland with little to no impact on community to a high-density area will be significant. There will be impacts on infrastructure and the lack of infrastructure, like no, no water supply system, no public water supply system, no public sanitation system. In the smart Bullock 2045 plan, the things you targeted in 2045 plan that you supported was to protect property rights while supporting economic development. Strategically locate future developments in relation to public infrastructure. There is no public infrastructure here. Preserving agriculture land and agriculture as a cornerstone to our economy, requiring future development to preserve and, to support and, and preserve the rural and natural settings. As physical development continues with protecting the population growth, agriculture and forestry land, the class of land that we, we generally decline. Rural character areas include rural open space, rural neighborhoods, and rural centers. These are defined by agriculture activities and low-density residential uses and limited low-intensity non-residential uses. In your own Bullock County review, your own Bullock County review and assessment, it said the zoning patterns and consistency, consistency has a negative impact. The Bullock County review says the development does not appear to conform with suggested land use policy. The review says the development will have a negative impact on the southeast Bullock High School feeder system and, and Nevers Elementary. It said a, a own community water and well system will have to be required for this and it's a neutral affair. We view, in our case, that we have a negative affair, separate from the impact on homes and our wells around there and the surrounding farm operations. The environmental impact, again, the Bullock County review said it'd be neutral, but however, we feel like the artificial light from a housing subdivision that was once farming community. Thank you, Mr. McCorkle. Yes. I will enter a copy of your paperwork into the minutes for the meeting. Okay, all right, thank you. One more thing if I can add, we, we do have a petition, 67 names that, that signed in support of, uh, doing this, doing away with this rezoning. Thank you, sir.
Tammy Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, are you here?
It's me, it's Tammy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tammy. My first time here. Uh, my name is Tammy Anderson. I live on Ephesus Church Road. I grew up in Evans County. Get my notes. We're on the Evans County-Bullock County line. There has been approximately 4,000 Haitians employed in Evans County, which are currently living in, with 10 to 20 people per house. They weren't expecting that, but they got it. The land was purchased through LLCs and now they have a mess. Their crime is going up and they're fixing to have nowhere to put the 4,000 Haitians. So is this what's coming in our neighborhood? I mean, you know, they're fixing to, they can't have 20 in a house, sorry.
Ma'am, ma'am, just address the board, please.
I hadn't done that before, okay? We don't want what's happening in Evans County to spill over the county line, okay? We just, you know, crime, we, we don't need it. It's agriculture, keep it Ag 5. If you do approve it, and it does turn out to be spilled over from Evans County's stuff, you're gonna have crime, the schools, and the roads. I've been living out there for over 50 years and our roads have never been maintained. You put them houses out there, now you're gonna have to maintain our road. Just please, look at what's happening in the surrounding counties so that it will not come into Bullock County. They're doing it in Scriven County, too. 35 new houses are going up. So just, just, you know, look at what's happening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Garrett Sewell.
Good evening. Um, I'm Garrett Sewell. I am, uh, the son-in-law of Ms. Gary, uh, Mr. Gary and Ms. Judy McCorkle. I don't currently live directly in this area, but the family has land in that area that will become mine, um, and I would like to protect my family's interest out here. One of the issues I see with this, um, the St. Col Road and talking about access off St. Col Road, if you do decide to go and approve this, I think that St. Col Road should be, um, excluded from any access. And all those lots that are on St. Col Road, I grew up watching subdivisions, different things, people make their own access, they'll mess that road up. If you do decide to approve this, I believe you should make some kind of barrier so that they cannot access St. Col Road and go straight through to Ephesus Church Road. This area is a quiet rural area. My kids, I hope, will live there one day, um, with the land and, and things that my in-laws may, may leave us. And I want it to be the quiet rural area that they grew up in as grandchildren. Also, I would like to remind the commissioners, a lot of us in this room voted for responsible growth and development, and I don't think this is responsible, so please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Bruce Simons.
Hello, commissioners. Don't we have a impact fee study going on right now?
Be starting it soon.
How much we paying for it?
Hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand dollars. All right. We just struggle with our, with our budget. We all know that. All right. And I understand with already approved development, there could be close to, uh, 10,000 homes that haven't developed yet in this county, already approved, that we don't have nowhere. We, with that said, you know, please do Bullock County citizens a favor and vote all, all of this now today, all of the zones now today. And, you know, we need it up, you know, as elected officials, we, we shouldn't be putting Bullock County in a bind right now. We don't need no more cost for our schools, our hospital, our policemen, our public works, and that's what you're doing. Until we get the impact fees in place and the study back, it all needs to be off the table. So please vote it now until we get the impact fee study back. Please. Do Bullock County a favor, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simons.
Jeremy Anderson.
Unlike what, uh, the respective gentleman said, uh, further unfettered growth is not inevitable. It's not. You have the authority that you've been voted for by the residents of the county to make wise decisions. It says wisdom on that seal there. I was in the crime scene world for a long time as an investigator, and yes, crime does exist everywhere, but I guarantee you, when you have more high-density area, there's gonna be crime. Crime's going to go up. That happens all the time. People move to a rural area, people move to Bullock County, for example, uh, to get away from it. If someone likes to live in a high-density area, go ahead, no problem with that. But folk, there are many folks that don't. And on one thing I noticed on, uh, the seal before, uh, that's one of the seals, but one of the very first slide, the bottom of it said agriculture. I don't know how many people noticed that. The bottom said agriculture. It is the cornerstone of this county. I live in a sixth-generation, at least farmhouse that's being restored, uh, eighth-generation farmland up to 1832. Uh, again, it, many folks come here for either homesteads, farmsteads, large and small farms, estates, rural living. If there wants to be development, there's plenty of places around Statesboro, that area to develop all you want to develop, one end to the other. You don't have to come 15, 20 miles outside of Statesboro to develop this rural area that people have chosen to, to live there. Some have moved recently, 20, 30 acres, just for that, and now it's turned upside down. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
And Amanda Klingel.
Hello. Um, just real quick, speaking on the safety side of things, um, the biggest thing is I'm a mama. I got two boys. I moved out to the country so they could run around in my yard and not have to worry about getting run over. People fly up and down St. Col. We live in between Union Church and Ephesus. People fly up and down that road already. And my boy, he knows, he's like, hey, can't go past this peak entry, just in case. You bring all these different people out here, they're gonna fly up and down that road 'cause it's a fun dirt road to drive. Ask my husband, he used to do it when he was a teenager. And it's, that area is very special to us. Not only that, you know, when the hurricane came through, people out there were out of power for a week, two weeks. So you talk about Georgia Power coming in, are they taking that business away from EMC now? Are we gonna have to, you know, switch power companies? What's that gonna look like? Are we staying on EMC? Are we going to Georgia Power? You know? And then lastly, 301, it's a death trap right now, and if y'all bring in another subdivision, it's only gonna get worse. Turning on to 301, not a big deal. Turning off of 301, I have been almost rear-ended about six times with both of my babies in my car. And y'all talk about me getting out and being angry? Uh, yes, I will do it. So I just really hope that y'all think about it, and much like people said earlier, we voted against this growth of Bullock County so rapidly, so please just really consider that when you're voting. Thank you.
And the, uh, the folks for it, they don't have any more time, but, okay. Sir, if you'd like to come up and make some comments in rebuttal or, or just anything else you'd like to add as far as the, the pros of this property, you've got about two minutes and 34 seconds still.
Sir, like I said, we are doing our best and will develop a very, very nice subdivision with not a lot of houses. There's not going to increase the crime. Like, hey, is it increased in Johnson-run subdivision here? Is there more crime in there because there's a subdivision? That's just one that I'm thinking of. There's plenty more. We don't think so. The problem with the Haitians, it's not my problem. You know, I don't hire them and I don't pay them, I don't work them, but they're here. You might want to talk to the Biden administration about that, why they did it, they came in. Has nothing to do with this subdivision we're proposing, stuff like that. Water usage, we don't use as much water in a subdivision on 20 houses as my sooner-pity irrigation will use tonight. I'm a farmer, I understand how it works. I know how it goes, but we're trying to develop something that's really good, that's really nice, and there's an area out there for it. You've got a lot of people who work out there now and more coming. That's what I've been told. I certainly don't know that for a fact, but there's more, more plants coming into that area. You're gonna need some housing there. It's a good area to put it. You know, we purchased the land, you know, we can, we should be able to kind of use it. We don't want to grow cotton on it, we can grow houses on it, it'll be okay, it's not a problem. So that's what we're trying to do, but so many things have been said here about it that's just not correct. But we still ask the Board of Commissioners to kindly look at this for us. If you need any other information, I'm available anytime to meet with any of you, one-on-one or the whole group, to help you with it. But we're proposing a really good, nice area. It's not gonna be an area for trashy stuff. Like I said, it's covenants, it's gonna be well-built and well-preserved. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any discussion from the, the board? Any questions from the board? Seeing how we gonna have to do this again? Okay, not hearing any, I'm gonna call for a motion to defer this. Is there movement, Mr. Chairman? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously to defer this until the 5th of August.
All right. Item two tonight is a rezon request by Michael Mallard. The, uh, request is for approximately 24 acres, which is currently zoned Ag 5, and the request is to go to an R80, 80,000 square foot lot minimum, of which to create a, a single-family subdivision. The property is located on Cleto Road. Here's the approximate location on the map, as indicated by the star. It is in the, um, rural open space character area. And this is the parcel which is, uh, the request is being made. There's currently, um, a few houses on this parcel which were, um, divided out in, in the five acres as the Ag 5 zoning. Those houses would be incorporated in, into the subdivision according to the sketch plan. So the additional lots that would be, um, be created by this development will be five for a total of nine lots. And here's the, uh, sketch plan that was provided by the applicant, which would, shows a private road, private access on the Cleto Road, and again, the road being internal to the subdivision. And the property as it is currently. And those are two of the homes, uh, as I previously mentioned, that are already on the, on the parcel that'd be part of the neighborhood. With that, staff recommends approval of the request with some, with a few conditions. Planning and zoning commission recommended a denial by unanimous vote. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you or Mr. Michael Mallard, who is the applicant.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Mallard. I've been a resident of Bullock County all my life, and I built a few houses for myself and others to be, to live in and rent. These nice factories have brought us a lot of nice jobs to get, and I'm just trying to provide some nice house. And these are houses, not apartments. Now, they're nice, single 1,364 square feet house, houses, and they're, I'm using foam insulation in them now, so they'd be really efficient houses. And I would just like to build five more on this 24-acre tract. And like I said, it's right next to my house, too, so I, it's not gonna be any crazy area or nasty or anything like that. I could keep it up, keep myself. I could keep it up, keep myself, and it's all going to be clean, nice area, nice houses. If y'all would like it, if y'all would approve the rezoning from Ag-5 to R-80. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mallard.
Mr. Garrett Sowell?
So before you start, sir, I just want to remind y'all, there's two people that have signed up in opposition to this, so. Our ordinance, I got 10 minutes.
Sir?
Y'all got 10 minutes collectively.
All right. Thank you, sir. So my name is Garrett Sowell. I live about three miles from this proposed subdivision down on Cleto Road, I mean, down on THLE Road. And I disapprove of this plan that Mr. Mallard's proposing for a few reasons. One, we have plenty of housing going up in the Cleto area. We have Rexford that is currently under development down on my road. One of Mr. Bell's properties has been approved for building, I think somewhere around neighborhood of 100 houses, over 100 acres, and I think they're going to call that one Silverleaf. So there's plenty of land already approved for this in our area. I don't think that Cleto Road, the infrastructure there is sufficient for more than what is already planned that hasn't even started yet. I just noticed the other day, they're, they're doing the surveys for the right-of-way on mine, so they aren't even close to starting on those houses. So I don't think a lack of housing in the area is at all a problem here. I do want to show a couple photos of the current state of the houses that are on the property. If you can show that for me? So if I can get that turned around there. All right, so this is some of the current state of some of the housing that is already there. And Mr. Mallard stated he wanted to build nice houses, but is this the state of the housing that he's going to build? Is it going to be like this? Are we going to hold him to a higher standard? I mean, the Cleto Road area is rural. There's a lot of folks with, like as you saw in pictures, side-by-sides and vehicles, and people like to do what they want to with their land, but if we're going to add five to 10 more houses that look like that, I don't see any value in it. And like I said, the amount of housing that's coming, that's going to be available, is sufficient. Also, sorry, lost my train of thought. He has previously stated he wanted to rent housing out, and I don't think we need to have housing for rent. I think we need to build family wealth. I think we need to go to single individual ownership in areas like this. So let's build wealth for Bullock County citizens and not become tax burdens with renters who don't pay tax. Thank you.
Dean Roberts?
I live right across the road from this property he's wanting to develop, if that's what you call it. I've been there for 13 years now, and I've been, I've actually been there for 25 years. I've spent the last 25 years making that my home. As you can tell, I'm not a good speaker, so bear with me. But like he said, he's already got homes there and pretty much repeating what Mr. Sowell said, there is, judging from what he's got, it's going to be a mess. I mean, he can call them not apartments if he wants to, but there's no way you can look at that and call it a actual house to me. And in my opinion, if you, you get on Cleto Road and you travel from one end to the other, that is the biggest eyesore on that whole road. So, and then again, you've got renters in there, and we all know a lot of times renters are not going to have the pride and, and, you know, respect for the community or anything like you and I would or whatever, but I just, I just wish we could leave that Ag-5 zone in that area. What he's got there just does not fit in at all. But I appreciate y'all's time and hope y'all will help us out.
Mr. Mallard, you still got about nine minutes on the clock if you'd like to come up and say anything else.
I don't have anything, a lot to say. It's just they're, these, these nice factories need some workers, and that's a place for those workers to live, and renters pay taxes. They buy groceries and gas and everything from the county, so I think they pay taxes as well, so. And I pay my share of the taxes, pay plant taxes, so just want to say this. That storm done some damage to that guy's barn over there, and he has a little crazy junkyard thing he had started there, but I've got him to clean it up since then, and he's obviously putting a roof on that barn or something right there, so all that's kind of cleaned up a little bit. That little Ford Ranger that was on that pitch right there, it runs. The guy just don't drive it very much. I think he puts his bags of trash in the back of it and carries it to the dump. I'm not really sure. He doesn't have flat tires or anything on it, so he drives. I just want to say that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mallard. And sir, there's time on the clock if you'd like to come back up.
Can I just ask the people?
Sir, why don't you just come up here to the front, so if you speak into the microphone, then they can hear you out in the internets, too.
I just wanted to ask people that are opposed to this to stand up. That's all I'm going to do.
So both sides of this still have time on the clocks? Or anybody else that would like to, or would either of y'all like to come back up and say anything else? Okay.
If you're not signed up, can you speak?
No, sir.
That's why I stopped.
Any discussion from the board on this issue? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion.
Motion to defer to next evening meeting.
Okay. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously to defer this to the 5th of August.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Item 3 tonight is a rezone request by Ms. Beverly Kennedy, who submitted an application to rezone 6.07 acres from Ag-5 to R-80 residential, 80,000 square foot lot minimum, which purpose would be to subdivide into additional lots, I guess two additional lots. The property is located at 1584 Old River Road South. Staff recommends approval of the request, and planning and zoning recommended approval by five to zero vote. Again, it's stated it's located on Old River Road South, as shown on the map, for the approximate location. This is the zoning map with the parcel depicted. Currently, there's one single-family home on the, on the property. And this was the plan that was provided by the applicant. And we have some photos of the property as it is today. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you or to Ms. Beverly Kennedy.
Ms. Kennedy, before you start, Mr. Davis, I believe you said you wanted to recuse yourself from this because of a familiar relationship. Ms. Kennedy, the floor is yours.
I just want to give a little bit of land to my best friend so she can build on it. She helped me when my dad got sick, so. And that's it.
And I don't believe there's anybody signing up in opposition to this. So once again, without any discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman, to.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously to defer this until the 5th of August 2025. And Mr. Davis, I'm just going to go ahead and save the trouble of moving again because you look real comfortable there next to Mr. Rushing. I've also got a letter for him, Mr. Davis, explaining his involvement with this next zoning project as well, so he's going to keep his seat right there in the audience.
All right, Commissioners. Item number four tonight is a rezone request by John and Marie Honeycutt Family, LLLP, whose, the application is to rezone approximately 51 acres of a tract that is approximately 64, almost 65 acres, of which portions of the property, I guess we're looking at rezoning from Ag-5 to the R-8. There is some highway commercial frontage along 80, but again, the purpose of the rezoning would be to create a single-family subdivision located on US Highway 80 East. Mr. Rushing will be serving as the agent. Staff recommends approval of the request with conditions, and I will note that staff updated the staff report since the planning and zoning commission meeting to reflect discussions that were had in the planning and zoning meeting. So primarily dealing with Hagan Lane and acquiring a right-of-way with, if the development were to move through. And so with that, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a denial by unanimous vote. This is the approximate location of the, of the parcel. Again, it's on Highway 80, east of Statesboro. I guess just to the east of, where Burt Colter and 80, that intersection. And that's the zoning map as shown, and aerial of the, of the property. And this is the sketch plan that was provided by the applicant. I just want to make sure, is this y'all's latest one? Okay. Okay. This is an updated sketch plan from, since the planning and zoning meeting, I believe, which has additional buffers shown. And photos of the property. This is Highway 80 going, looking west, and that would be looking east. And I'll go back to the sketch plan. All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you or Mr. Steve Rushing, who's agent for the applicant.
Mr. Rushing, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I am representing the John and Marie Honeycutt family partnership. With us is the general partner, Mr. Jim Davis, along with one of the limited partners, his wife, Janice, and her sister couldn't be with us for health reasons, but they're the Honeycutt girls. Their, their parents were John and Marie, who farmed this for many years, right up until his death, really, and then Ms. Marie died later, and the girls have kept it until this time. They're now, I'll talk about ladies' ages, but they're in their 70s, and they are seeking some financial security from this property, which they own. You're very familiar with it. I'm sure all of you have driven past it many times. It's, as you saw in the star, it's about halfway between Statesboro and Brooklyn. We are requesting this 51 acres that you see there of the 65 tract to be rezoned as R-8, single-family residential with minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. It is partly out of an Ag-5 zone and partly of a highway commercial zone that would become this R-8 zone. This is only possible because of public utilities. City of Statesboro, water and sewer is just to the west, or will be just to the west of this property. We've actually timed our application in alignment with the planned extension of that water and sewer. Of course, the importance of that, no water wells are required, so no land using up water wells, no septic tanks, no private septic lines, so no land is needed for that. That's why you can have this many houses on this tract of land. With this R-8 zone, as you see there, there is approximately 134 lots planned, if all work out after we conduct all of our examination of the property. There are a few wetlands on the property, as you see them in green, but we want to have any of our development in those wetlands, and there are no flood zones on this property. We assert the standards of review, support our application. Obviously, the staff did a really good job in stating that, and also in their recommendation of approval with their suggested four conditions. We've examined those conditions. We have no problems with any of those. The one condition that suggests that we access rather than to Hagan Lane there, that we would access Highway 80, we are prepared to do either, as the county engineers and the state GOT would allow. Obviously, it would involve both of those groups to ultimately determine where the access would be for this property. More likely that the, the best access may be to Highway 80 would maybe be an emergency access on Hagan Lane. If the county, however, required us to use Hagan Lane, or the state would not allow us to access Highway 80, then we would pave to county specs that part of Hagan Lane that we would be impacting. How would we be compatible with the surrounding properties? We've got quite an assortment, actually. Of course, we've got commercial property on one side. We've got another residential development, Burt Town on one side, on the south. We do have some single-family and some ag use. To the east towards Brooklyn is a mobile home park. So we believe that using, obviously, the county buffer requirements implemented, as you see there, we can certainly remain compatible with those surrounding properties. There is, you see there, some detention ponds. That is for our planned surface water systems. Right now, there are some, it's uncontrolled water, and I understand that there is some folks experiencing negative impacts from the water flow that maybe flowed through this property. Of course, we've engaged some of the finest engineers, Hussey, Gay, and Bell, to engineer this system. And of course, state law requires that it allow no worse impacts than prior to the development, and we expect it to actually be better. I'll let Hayden discuss that in greater detail. The main thing about this is we are following the Smart Bullock 45 comprehensive plan. That plan assigns a suburban neighborhood to this area, which anticipates an R-8 zone. It also anticipates a density of two to four residents per acre. Ours would be 2.6, certainly within that range. And why is it in the comprehensive plan for suburban? And it's because that plan is following the infrastructure. I believe our development tonight is the only one tonight that has access to public utilities, and that's what the plan is doing. It's trying to follow where the, the growth is going, the utilities are going. You've got a state road there. The county, U County Fire Department would cover this area. So that, that's just why the plan is in place, that we're attempting to follow that plan. One other thing I'd like to mention before I surrender my time is it is in the... One other thing I'd like to mention before I surrender my time is it is in the Brooklyn and Southeast Bullock School Zone. Interestingly, however, it does abut two other elementary zones. And again, I don't know how the school board would allocate their resources, but it is right there on the edge of three school zones. But it is within the Brooklyn and Southeast Bullock Zone. I just mentioned that, just given its geographic uniqueness. I also mentioned this is a two to five-year commencement. During that time is when we would propose to hook into that water and sewer. And the houses would actually start probably in year two or year three, full bailed out, probably three to 10 years before it would be completely built out. We're just suggesting that if you balance the promotion of public health with these property owners' rights, I think you find this is a good, good balance. We would ask that you actually accept the staff's recommendation on this and to grant a rezon, and appreciate your time.
Yeah, Ms. Deborah Hatton.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. If I understand it correctly, do we get to speak August the 5th?
Yes, ma'am.
Then we'll wait and speak on August the 5th. Thank you.
Cynthia Collins.
I plan to withhold my presentation until August 5th.
Okay. Carl Collins.
I'll defer to the 5th.
Robert Lee.
Thank you, good evening. Chairman Bennett, the rest of you Commissioners. The only reason I come before you to voice my concerns. I don't know how many of you saw the movie The Perfect Storm, but I feel like where I live, that is where I'm at right now. I live on Grimshaw Lane. I was there before they ever laid the first block for the first foundation in Johnson Run. I had to deal with Roy Thompson. I've learned throughout all that that if I ever have any dealings, again, there will be witnesses present, there will be notary publics present, because over the years, me and my wife have been story two time and time again. I have a neighbor, Lee Davis here. He stood right in the middle of the road during all this. We were made all sorts of campaign promises, and every one of them was broken. I, I call it the out-of-sight guarantee, because once he got out of sight, that's how long that guarantee lasted. My problem is, I live, my property is basically down in a bowl. On one side, we got Highway 80. And if you, if you follow topographical maps, water flows downhill from Highway 80. On the front side of me there, water flows downhill from Johnson Run. And I mean, they went and they put in like eight big culverts. When we first bought property out there, it was farmland. And as you all know, farmland absorbs water. What happens when you start putting shingles and you start paving roads? That water don't soak in. Now, the, the nice gentleman that was giving the presentation with the beautiful map and all, and the blue that just signifies the retention ponds and all, I went through that with Johnson Run. They promised me, oh, they built the first phase, and I had never had a water issue. And since I moved out there, we bought 10 acres. I've always planted a garden and all. The first real big rain after they put in the first phase of Johnson Run, it, we had a big rain one time. I had watermelons growing, and it floated watermelons off the hill on my property from all the water coming from Johnson Run. Now I'm having to deal with the water, y'all talking about the SS Greenway walking path. That's another issue. If you pull up the map, and I saw the gentleman do this earlier, it'll show this. Can you do it where it'll show that on the screen? Turn it, which way?
Keep turning, keep turning.
Keep turning, one more time. Okay, this little spot right here, that's my part, that's one of my five-acre lots. All behind me there, that is, is what's called Upper Black Creek. That's, I guess that's like the headwaters of it or whatever. From what I can tell on the map, it starts up there around Grove Lakes, right behind the funeral home. And that whole branch, it, all the ground on both sides slopes down to Black Creek. And every bit of that water, when it rains, comes right to my back door there. The back edge of my property is, is the property line right there at Black, Upper Black Creek. It used to be to where we'd have rains and the water would run on off. As you all know, we've been through several hurricanes and all, this last couple we had last year. The branches are just full of lint. I'm sure y'all had y'all's share of picking up limbs and all out your own yards. The branch behind my house is so, the trees are just laid down everywhere. It is so clogged up, even with one inch of rain, water just, it runs down to that point, and then it don't run off, it just stands. I can't even deal with the water now. When I first moved out there, I used to could be able to, to go to the rear of my property and hunt, and I never even owned a pair of rubber boots. Now I can't even walk down there without water running over the top of my boots. Now, like I said before, all this, the, the, the blue stripity, that's wetlands. The solid blue, that's like the 100-year flood plain on, on that map. That's one good thing about the Bullock County maps, you can pull up and it'll show you. And I know years ago, you know, if you wanted to, to put a home or something, first thing the county did was they flopped that big old map out, and if it said wetlands, you wasn't gonna do nothing. If you was even close, you was doing a perk test. Nowadays, I don't know whether that's the process to go through or what. It seems to me like they just build anything wherever and where, you know, wherever they want to. I, I was looking at the map, that little subdivision right there behind Pojo's on 80, Burt Town Crossing. A quarter of those houses in Burt Town Crossing are built on wetlands, according to that map. Huh?
Amen.
It is. I looked at it, I counted the houses, over a quarter of those houses were built in wetlands. But, but my problem is, even if they put a retention pond in, a retention pond is no more than a, than a glass. Once you fill that glass up, what happens to that water? It's gonna run out and it's gonna run off. And that's gonna be the same thing that happened with, with rain going in that retention pond. It, it, this, because you got all those roofs, you gonna have all that pavement, and it's downhill towards Upper Black Creek. It's all gonna come my way, and I can't hang with that now, I'm drowning. I don't know what to go home and put on a life vest or what, but, you know. I understand there's a lot of growth in this county. A lot of that is thanks to Brian Kemp. And, and if, you know, I sound a little sarcastic, you are correct in assuming that. Huh? Oh, yeah. Years ago, me and my wife, when they first started talking about the SS Greenway, we came to one of these council meetings, and we give everybody a handout, every commissioner, and Roy Thompson included. And we expressed our desire, we want a water impact survey done before anything can be decided. This was in 19, in 2021. It dated June the 6th, no, June the 7th of 2021. We haven't heard anything about a water impact study or nothing. I don't know who I need to talk to about that. I know it'll cost the county money, but what's it gonna cost me and my property?
That's all of us, John, I mean, from Grimshaw Lane.
Yeah.
You'll open it up, all of us can live there, sign that and present it.
So at, at that time, we all got signatures from, from all our neighbors stating that we wanted a, a water impact study done. And as far as we, we were never contacted about anything, we never heard another word about it. I just wanted to voice my concerns. I thank everyone of y'all for y'all listening to my rambling. And y'all have a good day.
Mr. Lee Davis.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you Commissioners tonight. My name is Lee Davis, I've lived at Grimshaw Lane for probably over 30 years, and I'm Robert's neighbor. I'm fortunately a little uphill from where he lives, because all the ditches in front of my house go to his property. And the county a couple of years ago, was it Robert, that they come and dug a ditch all the way back to the creek back there so that the water would run off. But he is correct, Johnson Run has several drainage pipes that run into the ditch on our dirt road. Many times, just up from where he lives, the water runs over the dirt road there because he just can't, he can't handle it. That's the thing I'm concerned about, is the properties east of this proposed subdivision is the water runoff. And if you go down to Grimshaw Road right this evening and, and go down there where it goes into the bottom where the creek is.
That's the conclusion of the time that we have for the folks that are speaking in opposition of this.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just say, go and look at Grimshaw Road, and the water's up to nearly where the elevation is of that road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayden Rollins.
I'll, I'll hold my time back for a moment.
Any discussion from the Commissioners on this issue? Hearing the item, I'll call for a motion on this. Okay, do I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, we'll defer this to the 5th of August.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Am I good, you good? All right, Agenda item number five tonight is a rezon request by ABA Development LLC, who submitted the application for rezoning of 50.13 acres from Ag 5 to an R25, which is a residential 25,000-square-foot lot minimum, of which the purpose is to create a single-family subdivision. The property is located on Maria Sorrell Road. Ms. Grace Wooten will serve as the agent. Staff recommends approval of the request with conditions. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by majority vote with one against. As shown on the map here, this is the approximate location, it's north of Statesboro, in the suburban neighborhood character area. Again, located on Maria Sorrell Road. The property currently is zoned Ag 5. Adjacent properties are zoned R25. There's a light industrial zoning to the south. And to the north is Ag 5 property. And here's an aerial of, of the property. There is an active rail line which goes on the east side of the property, in which there is some heavy industrial zoning to the east or northeast. But again, by and large, the, the proposed development appears to meet the zoning ordinance for, or the, as proposed, would meet the majority of the zoning ordinance. We just have a few conditions that are recommended for the, for the development. This is the site plan that is provided by the applicant. And this is the property as it currently is at the time that we placed a zoning notice sign on the property. And I'll go back. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you or to Ms. Grace Wooten as agent.
Ma'am, floor is yours.
Good evening, I hope y'all are having a good one. I'm Grace Wooten with Pape Dawson Engineers, formerly Maxwell Reddick. And I'm presenting as the agent on this rezon application. And I want to start by thanking you all, the Board of Commissioners, and the county staff, and the community for being here and taking time out of your evening and your holiday week to hear me, to allow me the opportunity to speak on this and present this. As mentioned and presented last month, we are requesting a rezon, to rezone this property to R25 for the purpose of a relatively low-density, single-family residential neighborhood that complies with the Bullock County Comprehensive Land Plan recommendations and complements the existing surrounding uses. Staff previously recommended approval with conditions concerning tree canopy, playground implementation, and conventional construction. These were all conditions that we happily accepted. And after addressing the, at the time, singular stormwater-related concern from the community, the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval. With that, I want to conclude with a few highlights that I think are critical to mention. First, this proposed plan does not negatively impact traffic, utilities, or stormwater. Second, while the Comprehensive Land Plan suggests suburban neighborhoods have two to four units per acre, we are conscious of the natural resources and the agricultural context, and we're proposing a rezon and a site plan that is significantly less dense at 1.3 units per acre. Lastly, I want to emphasize that the intention of this rezon and proposed plan will be developed by local builders using local subs. So, I have a feeling you all are going to vote to defer this tonight. But I really do want to encourage you all and the community to not defer your comments and questions, because I personally and on behalf of the local developers care, and we want to address those questions and concerns and, you know, avoid any kind of festering and anything if we can get ahead of it. And with that, we graciously, next month, ask you to follow the staff and planning and zoning recommendations of approval. Again, thank you all for your time.
Garrett Saul.
Good evening again. So I'm Garrett Saul, I live down on THA Road, about 2.7, 2.8 miles from this proposed subdivision. During the planning and zoning meeting, some stormwater questions came up, and the stormwater retention ponds and where that was gonna go. I would like that answered. That current stormwater pond on the northeast doesn't make sense when you physically look at the lay of the land. The stormwater pond on the north, on the west side does when you look at how the water flows. I mean, anybody can look at the, the, the topographical map and tell. So I believe there's some stormwater questions that need to be answered as well. I challenge the active railway, there's a propane station, transfer station on the northeast side. I don't know if that's even active anymore, but it's still there and looks like it's been taken care of and used. They have light industrial on the south side that I don't think would really, I wouldn't want to buy a house with all the culverts and things that are stored there in my backyard. Concentration in that area, far as residential. Concentration in that area, as far as, uh, residential housing, you already have Stillwater, Sweetbrier, Eight Point, and then also the others I've spoken on previously tonight. You have Rexford going up, um, right, right down the road across from THA Road and Silverleaf coming down on THA Road. So I think you have a concentration of housing there that'll meet the needs for the area. Your own staff, uh, during their land use, land use planning, um, said that everything was negative except, negative or neutral, except for it meeting the comprehensive plan with, uh, negative impacts on fire, EMS, uh, schools, and recreation. The access and egress there, from, from that road coming back from where Eight Point comes into Maria Sorrell Road is a downhill area, and then coming from Maria and Kyle Sorrell Road across the railroad track there, that is a, um, hard curve that once you build up there, it's gonna become a blind curve. So I would, I would appreciate someone looking into where that access and egress will be. And lastly, um, the only positive noted, um, is again, the land use planning from your 2045, uh, comprehensive plan. And in closing, many of the people, um, that you've seen here tonight voted, um, for a big change last election. They voted for responsible growth. And I understand precedents that have been set by previous administrations, um, but please do not be scared to do what it takes to break the precedents and really look at some responsible planning and zoning. I believe you'll find a, a majority of your constituents that will be behind you. Thank you.
Ms. El Nita Safely.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm glad to be able to speak with y'all this evening. He just pretty much covered everything I had to say. The drainage retention pond, that bottom point down there is the bottom place where it would need to be because that's where all the water's gonna go. That blind curve is definitely going to be a dangerous issue because that, right now, you can see across the field and see the very large concrete trucks and gravel trucks and dirt trucks coming out of the concrete factory that is a light industrial, I'm assuming, that's making big six-foot concrete culverts. Uh, and there's a lot of big trucks traveling on Maria, or on, uh, Maria Sorrell now. My, my subdivision is right down the hill there, open into Stillwater. We were a one, one-access subdivision. And if the water comes down that hill, the way I did a little Google study and how much rain can fall on an acre of land and a, an inch of water, how much water that actually makes, we will lose our road. We will have no in and out in our subdivision, which would be very dangerous. I'll bring pictures because I had sent some in, and they didn't make it apparently. So next time around at the fifth, I'll have pictures to show you of this. I actually started this just wanting to say something about the railroad crossing up there. That propane area is active. There are two ten-foot by fifty-foot tanks and a bunch of little tanks around it. I don't know what kind of boom that'll make if it blows, but I would not want to live in that, those two houses in the top right-hand corner there because they're right next there and adjacent to it, and it doesn't look like they have very much space between them and those huge tanks. But the railroad crossing is, got gaps that, from the top of a rail down to the dirt, you lose your alignment on your car going over that at one mile an hour, uh, and it'll break a tire or a wheel. Um, and the access point right there is just above the one coming in and out of the concrete factory at the, below it. And so there's gonna be a lot of cars, you're gonna add a hundred cars going in and out, not, I don't even know if they've accounted for the number of trucks moving in and out, and a buffer area around that that, to shield all this from the road because it's gonna be ugly. And it is a blind, dangerous curve. It's a dangerous curve now, but now it's gonna turn into a blind, dangerous curve once there are houses in there. So I will come back on August the fifth and have more to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Would you like to come back up and rebut anything that was said?
Sure. Do y'all have any questions?
For yours.
Okay. Um, so I'll start by addressing the stormwater first. While one of the stormwater detention ponds does go with the natural topography, the other is not. That is a lower end of the site, and we would use, we would, we have lots of talented engineers on staff that would design the site to go into that stormwater detention pond. And as far as it running off-site, I believe it was mentioned in the last, uh, the last presentation as well, that, I mean, we're recommend, we're required by the state and, you know, the county engineers who will review our plans and a moral standpoint of we're not gonna increase any more water runoff than already exists on that site. We will detain it up until, and account for a hundred-year storm event. And so stormwater, that, I mean, we have, that, that will be looked at very carefully. In, in regards to the negative impacts and neutral impacts, I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure what could have a positive impact on any utilities. So I think a neutral impact is best-case scenario as far as, we're not adding, we're doing a community well, it's septic system, we're not adding to that. The fact that we're not adding, we've looked at the ITE trip generator, we're not impacting traffic in a negative way. As far as the negative impacts that were listed is the schools and EMS and fire, those are because of current capacity struggles that would be affected by any development. And I don't think that that should affect property rights and the ability to develop, and especially when it's in alignment and in accordance with the county's comprehensive land planned and existing surrounding land uses. I, I respectfully disagree on what responsible growth looks like, and I think that this is, as far as any of the plans that we've looked at, I think that this one considers and maintains responsible growth. And I appreciate your time.
Still got about five minutes on the clock. If anybody else has anything that, if, that's signed up, would like to say anything in opposition. You can come back up to the podium if you'd like, man.
Uh, I would like to rebut the comment that it is not gonna change the water flow. Uh, if you take a fifty-acre peanut field that was beautiful peanuts last year and you put a hundred rooftops on it, there is no absorption on a rooftop. It's just gonna hit the ground and go, and that's what I wanted to say. And I'll see y'all again August fifth. Thank you.
Any question or discussion from the board? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a motion on this. Okay. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously to defer to the fifth of August 2025. I believe that concludes all our zoning issues for the night. So before I entertain a motion to approve the general agenda, do we have any discussion or modification desired by the county manager of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have one item. Uh, we already have executive session listed on the agenda. I asked to put potential litigation, uh, on that also during that session.
All right. Any other discussion or additions that need to be made? Hearing none, I'm gonna call for a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. At this time, I'll recognize those citizens who have signed up to address the board. Uh, once your name is called, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and make your comments. All speakers recognized will be allotted five minutes.
Bruce Simons.
Hey, Commissioner Bruce Simons. Real quick, I touched on it a few minutes ago, is, uh, is the impact fee study we planning? Again, I think it's necessary. I talked to several of you about it through, through the course. We struggle with our budget. We need to stop any kind of approb- improvements and rezonings. We got plenty of housing right now. I understand it's close to three hundred houses for sale in Bullock County. We got close to ten thousand approved waiting to be built. We don't need no more right now. We need to get an impact fee study done. We need to see what it done. We need to help the school board, make sure we don't overrun the schools. We could help the police department, the fire department. We need to help, you know, public works. We don't need no more right now. We need to get, we, I request a moratorium to stop rezoning right now until we, until we get all the, uh, studies back and impact fee study. That's why I'm requesting. And I think it could be done till we need it. We need it back. We can't handle no more. We had a budget, budget crisis almost just now. We don't need another one. We need to stop it and get a handle on it. And make these developers pay their fair cha- their fair share. I mean, is there any questions about that, any comments? What do y'all think about a moratorium to stop it? For now? Do y'all feel we need to stop it for now?
Yes, absolutely.
Your citizens want to put a halt to it until we get a handle on it. So please look at it. Please. Does everybody understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Tammy Anderson. Gary McCorkle. Alicia Neville.
Good evening. I am Alicia Neville, speaking as citizen of Bullock County tonight. And I know by looking at some of y'all's faces, y'all are tired and ready to go home. But I had two grandkids today, so I'm really excited to be here because now they're not tugging on me and pulling on me. I just wanted to go over some figures and some things for consideration. Well, first of all, I do have one question. A fire department on Union Church Road? That's like my road. I hadn't heard about this. Is that true, or is that just out there? Can somebody tell me something? And can you stop my time? Thank you, Taylor. I mean, I was, it was great. I just saying I didn't know about it.
Right. In twenty twenty-two, April of twenty twenty-two, when I became interim chief, uh, Chief Sykes and Chief, uh, Carter went to Paul with GIS, and we produced a map. A map that covers ninety-five to ninety-six percent of the county, uh, with new fire stations. And one of those areas that Paul Connor with GIS identified is a station at Highway three oh one at Union Church Road, uh, moving the current station at Atkins Anderson away from that point and moving it out to, uh, Union Church at three oh one to give a better coverage of that south end of the county there. So that's where that probably came from.
Thank you. Did, did we know where?
I don't know. I wish, I wish I knew, but.
Okay. Well, that's good news.
We have identified all the areas in the county to try to, uh, cover as much of the county as we can with fire stations, so.
Well, that's really good news. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I, I do want to say that I do fully understand that when it comes to having to approve or disapprove for zoning, there's a lot of things to consider. You know, you, I always come up here and tell you, as I'm going to tell you again tonight, to please consider the schools. But I also understand that that's not everything. There's all, I mean, I know that there's infrastructure. I know that there's the, the roads, the EMS, the police. I mean, there's a lot that goes into it. There's also, yes, the people who own the land and the people who want to buy the land and, you know, there's just a lot that goes into it, and I do understand that. And as Mr. Simons had mentioned, y'all have heard me, I guess y'all have, I don't know. Most people have heard me preach about getting a moratorium. Just, I, I want us to kind of like just stop and catch up. I'm not trying to be against anybody, you know, that, I mean, I might not, I don't know all these developers, so I don't know whether I like them all or not. But I'm not against that kind of thing. I just think that we're having trouble catching up. It's kind of like the man who pointed out wisdom up there. It also on this side says moderation. And we are going to be in a big bind, okay? We've been told all these stories about all of these people, and I know I stood up here two years ago and said that these people are not coming. And nobody believed me. They're still not all coming. They're just not, they're not coming here like we think they are. There may be some people coming. I sent you, Mr. Pope, an email, but I'm wondering if I sent it to the wrong place because I know that you're very good about responding, um, and I don't want to put you on the spot, so you may not know this off the top of your head, but somebody had said one time there was like four thousand approved developments so far in Bullock County? Does that sound just like fair or? I mean, I've heard ten thousand that, but I'm assuming that's the city and everything. Well, with, um, four thousand, and I'm also getting this other number from somebody else that said it one night, that's, if you use one, if you say one point seven children per the four thousand, you come up with twenty-three hundred and fifty-seven slots needed in the schools. Now, please understand, I, I don't, these numbers, I'm doing my best here with this. I mean, what I'm saying is I had to get them from different people. Okay? Right now, and this is going by the December, I mean, Sep- September of twenty twenty-four, and that was the last information that I could get, even though I am on the Board of Education, that was still the last information that was available to me about the open spots in the schools. And we have fourteen hundred and sixty spots. So, and that's over sixteen schools. That's the average of ninety-one spots per school. I know that out at Neville's, I did check on that one, and that was fifty-seven because of the first zoning thing that came up. And I know all this sounds like you're thinking, why are you still taking our time when we can't vote now until August the fifth? But obviously, I didn't know that before I got here. And, you know, I'm also kind of accident prone. I could not be here August the fifth for some reason. So I would like to tell y'all all of this now so that you can think on it in case another chicken attacks me. And then y'all can have this information. But I do think, you, I know we're not, Timmy, I know that we're not schooling county together, but. Okay. Well, don't attack me now. But, um, but I do think, I'm just asking for like time to, um, catch up so we don't get overloaded.
Thank you, Mr. Pope.
Thank you.
Ms. Jill Sims. Jill Sims. That's it?
All right, moving on with the agenda, we're gonna move into the consent agenda. I'm gonna read these items, and then we'll discuss them at the end here. Number one, approve the minutes from Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Number two, approve the minutes from Wednesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Number three, approve a resolution to establish a special streetlight district for Phase One of Mayberry Subdivision. Number four, approve a contract renewal by and between Bullock County Board of Commissioners, DBA, Bullock County Correctional Institute, and Inmate Calling Solutions LLC, DBA, ICS Solutions, ICS. We can approve these items collectively, or we can move any item to new business for further discussions. Do I have a motion? Okay. Do I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business, uh, county engineer, motion, or Ron Nelson, motion to approve in individual project order number five in accordance with master agreement for continuing professional services dated eight thirty, twenty twenty-four, with Kim Lee Horn and Associates in the amount of four hundred thousand twenty-four dollar, or excuse me, four hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars for providing design and engineering services for a new multi-span bridge and roadway improvement along GW Oliver Road over Little Lots Creek to be funded by T-Splost. And I believe Mr. Nelson is gonna join us by a remote. And I believe Mr. Nelson is going to join us via remote.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Can y'all hear me, commissioners?
Yeah, we got you.
Appreciate you allowing me to come in this evening and have this, put this up for motion so we can try to move forward with some of this project right here that is very important to the citizens of Bullock County. Just want to bring y'all up to speed on what's taking place. I'll go over a few of the highlights in this project. A portion of GW Oliver Road, approximately 700 feet east of St. Cold Road intersection and approximately 3,300 feet west of the GW Oliver Spur Road intersection has been closing traffic since August 6th, 2024. That was due to the effects of flooding from Tropical Storm Debbie event. GW Oliver Road was closed by Bullock County to extensive settlement scouring and pavement failure resulting in roadway collapse at the Little Lots Creek crossing. The drainage under GW Oliver Road at Little Lots Creek is currently conveyed by seven 72-inch reinforced concrete pipe culverts. And I believe you've got, correct me if I'm wrong, but can you put up the three photos that were taken of this location right here? I know it was in the packet. We want to maybe get that put on the screen as well as possible down.
Working on it.
Now, I was working on that, I'll continue. But flood damage on this portion of GW Oliver Road began last year during Tropical Storm Debbie on August 6th, 2024, and it produced 13.2 inches of rainfall. And that was from August the 4th, 2024 through August the 8th, 2024. This portion of GW Oliver Road was again affected during the unnamed storm event on November the 7th, 2024 through November the 8th, 2024, which produced 7.27 inches of rainfall during a 48-hour timeframe. And finally, the location of GW Oliver Road was again affected during the most recent May, the 12th, 2025 rain event, which produced 6.9 inches of rainfall within a 24-hour timeframe on May the 12th, 2025. The Bullock County Engineer House has held a scoping meeting with Kimley Horn and Associates on June the 13th, 2025 to discuss plans for design and engineering for permanent repairs to GW Oliver Road. At that time, Kimley Horn and Associates provided an individual project order, number five, dated June the 24th, 2025, which includes a proposal for professional services for design and engineering of permanent repairs to GW Oliver Road. And the proposed services include design project management coordination, hydrology and hydraulic modeling, hydrology and hydraulic coordination with FEMA along with an opinion of probable construction costs, topographical survey database prepared for the entire area, geotechnical studies and final design plans and documents for construction along with federal and state agency permitting. And then they will also have a portion of over-sight during the construction phase of services as well. All the services provided by Kimley Horn has previously stated will be in accordance with the master agreement for continuing professional services dated August 30th, 2024. And this proposal will include what we discussed, when I discussed it with them as far as the scoping of these services to provide a new multi-span bridge and roadway improvement project. Kimley Horn possesses the expertise and knowledge and certification necessary to provide design services for projects of this type. And I want to additionally point out that most recently FEMA has established a deadline for delivery of the H&amp;H report, which is critical for each one of these projects that we've been moving through with FEMA reimbursement, starting with Brandon Pond Road, most recently with Neville's Denmark, and then also with Country Club Road as well. And the opinion of probable construction cost will also be required on July the 25th, 2025, so later this month. Or, and the condition is that Bullock County will forfeit the possibility of having reimbursement for mitigation at this particular location with GW Oliver Road. With that, the total budget to provide design and engineering services for a new multi-span bridge and roadway improvement along GW Oliver Road over Lots Creek is $424,500 for the design services. And that's an overall budget for all the services previously mentioned. Stand here, waiting for any questions you may have.
If we don't meet the deadline with this engineering firm, are we going to be stuck with this full 424, or the 424,000? Are we going to be able to get a majority of it back? Or how does that work if we don't get the deadline met?
I had a conversation with Kimley Horn last week and I got an email from them Monday morning this week that said they will meet the deadline on the 25th of July before. So would we be stuck with it? They will have failed their attempt to provide the services, so I would say no, they would not have been able to render the services that will be in our agreement on this particular individual project order.
And also, FEMA's, we're looking at what, a 75% repayment on this?
Yes, sir. I believe it will be in line with the same thing we've actually already received reimbursement on Brandon Pond Road recently last week. And then also Neville's Denmark is also in a similar situation that we're applying for reimbursement. It'll be on 75% reimbursement for FEMA, and I believe we'll be in line for a 10% from FEMA.
And also, if we get in there and this bridge is just outrageously priced at $10 million or anything, we won't be able to, we're not going to be forced to go along with this, right? We'll be able to back out if we need to and step back and figure out other options?
Yes, sir. In my conversations with Kimley Horn as well, we will have the opportunity to offer and not pursue based upon what their opinion of probable cost is, if they're going to provide on or before July 25th.
Ron, just to clarify everything, if we don't go along with this $424,500, we'll get to do this project by ourselves and absorb the whole cost, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And, and the projected cost is going to be, again?
On the construction side, it would be $2 million to actually build this bridge. So if you could put both of them together, basically $2.5 million for construction and design services combined.
So either way, it's going to cost us that?
Yes, sir. We'll make some decisions, we want to try to restore this area so we can open back the traffic or just decide if we want to keep it closed or measure time and see other funding sources that can take over in excess of five years.
And just to clarify, that we have contacted several emergency agencies, far as the sheriff and EMS, 911, several other people that live in that area out there. And we, we did look at closing this and just do away with it. And that doesn't sound like that's going to work, correct?
That's my understanding. I believe interim county manager, Mr. Randy Tillman, may be able to speak more on that particular subject, but I believe he did reach out to the emergency response group and received a negative response.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tillman, you look like you want to add to that?
Well, I just didn't want to leave Ron hanging with that. That is correct, and that information. Did speak with the sheriff and several other entities with emergency services. And also, the sheriff spoke with some people in that area. Closing that road was not supported by anyone.
And, and I can tell y'all that I polled the people that live out there on GW Oliver, that's where my wife, I picked her up out on that road. And all the farmers, now, they want it closed because they don't want the traffic, but they don't want the inconvenience either of not being able to, that's a, that's a good cut through the road there. So it's been looked at.
Mr. Nelson, I just want to clarify, this H&amp;H study that we keep hearing about again and again, can you talk about the importance of that for just a minute, please?
Sure, yes, sir. The hydrology and hydraulic report, it is a minimum that must be provided for FEMA review prior to any form of construction taking place. So it has to be produced, reviewed by FEMA, and then it has to be approved by FEMA as well, and approved by their environmental side in the FEMA group, and then also their engineering side as well. So it is a vastly important document that must be produced on each and every one of these projects to qualify.
And what does that report actually do for them? Is it just, I mean, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
It gives them a better understanding of what the upstream effect is and the downstream effect is regarding this particular location. So we're moving through mitigation, so the mitigation would make improvements, so this would be avoided in the future. So they would back upstream to the nearest structure. I believe that's on Golf Course Road. And then there's going to be another structure on State Route 46 downstream. Both of those two structures are actually bridges. This particular location, even though it's got large diameter pipes, seven of them, spanning about 120-foot length, just cannot produce the amount of drainage that's necessary to promote positive drainage through that area. And that's the reason it was overwhelmed so bad and the scour effect took place.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any other questions from the commissioners? So hearing that, I'm going to call for a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the individual project order number five.
Okay, do I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I appreciate you coming in from, or taking time from your vacation, time with your family to do this tonight. So not seeing any other new business on the agenda here, I'm going to go into commissioner and staff comments. Do we have any comments from the staff tonight?
Good evening. Robert Siemens, Assistant Director Public Works. I was asked tonight to give y'all an update on Dekel Road. As y'all, some of y'all are aware, the damage that occurred during the storm has been repaired. New pipes have been installed and we have new headwalls in place. Currently, the public works staff is trying to finish out the road driving surface out there, and our goal is in the morning to open this road back up 100%. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ben Tapley, Fire Chief. I thought Brian was going to come up here and join me, but he told me to handle it. So just wanted to give you some updates. We did open up Stations 1 and 16 last night. We are, we have 22 firefighters on duty, started last night, going forward. So we do have EMS unit as well. Brian sent an EMS unit about lunch yesterday to Station 16, which is on Highway 67. So we do have a truck company, an engine company, and an ambulance there at that location. And currently running an engine company out of EMS along with our station in Cleto that we opened up a few weeks ago. So just wanted to give you updates on that. One more update is the city did approve the, on their side of things, the mutual aid agreement at this morning's meeting. I'll put it on the July 15th meeting to get that approved. So we will have that in writing where we will provide mutual aid to each other. Chief Grahams and I met last week just to make sure we had everything on our two sides at the administration level just in place. And even with or without a mutual aid contract in place, we all agree, if they need any help, just call us. And if we need any help, we're going to call them. And we're going to try to, try to do what's best for the citizens of Bullock County. And do y'all have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for all of that work on the EMS and goodbye.
Thank you. Commissioners, James Pope, Planning and Development Director. I just wanted to update you on a few things that I have, my department has going on that you all have previously approved, and you might be wondering, you know, what status is. The Septage Treatment and Disposal Study by Hofstadter and Associates. I met with, with Hayes Hofstadter today to get an update. And they're about, he said about 40, 45% complete with it, with anticipated, I guess, first draft back to us in about, about a month. But they do have some pretty good, I guess, suggestions in there with some cost estimates and all that. So I think it's going to be exactly what our, what we're looking for, what our small group was looking for in, in our discussion about septage and treatment. As I heard mentioned tonight, the impact fee study, I do have the RFP, I would say, at about 97%. Ms. Fay and I have to sit down and go through some of the scoring for those proposals, or well, before we send it out to the potential firms to bid on the, on the study. But I anticipate having that out, out for, to collect submittals about mid-July. So give me about two weeks. I think we'll have it out there to the consultants for, you know, go through the regular procurement process. And I would hope to say by September, we would be, we would have our consultant and be underway with the impact fee study. Of course, as I've shared with you before, that's about a 10 to 12-month process. And so I was really just kind of waiting to make sure it got in the budget and finalized in the budget before we move forward in doing that. So we're here now and ready to move forward. The groundwater sustainability program, I wanted to let you know that we met June 26, which was last Thursday, at the Bryan County Board of Commissioners' meeting room. We did attempt to stream the, the meeting. I think we had a few complaints about weed eaters and lawnmowers that were out of our control. And some of the audio for the, for the meeting was, you know, maybe not, not the greatest. But again, continuing our commitment to transparency and everything else, we will continue to stream those meetings for the public. For that program, we're still in negotiation with the three well drillers for the program. And Ron Nelson is kind of heading that up for us. But I was just going to say, we are still, you know, going through that process with them. And then you all, I've heard from most of you, but hopefully, I think y'all are, planning to attend the July 9th, which is next Wednesday at 5:00. I've scheduled a Georgia Tech, the housing study by Georgia Tech that we had, we paid Georgia Tech along with Evingham, Bryan, Savannah, and Chatham County to produce a coastal housing study. I've invited and coordinated with the Board of Education and City of Statesboro to have a joint meeting, which will be held at the Jack Hill Center, Oak Room specifically, which would be at 5:00 next Wednesday. So we're still trying to coordinate some of the logistics of holding the joint meeting. But Mr. Tillman and I, as well as Mr. Chairman, I think in our discussions, we felt like, given the, you know, the nature of the, of the conversation with housing, that it would be best that if, you know, invite our partners in the community to come listen to the housing study as well as, you know, we know that they'll have impacts as much as we will. So again, I believe it's on y'all's calendar, but just as a reminder.
Mr. Pope, do we know when the wells are going to go live yet?
We don't know when they're going to go into operation exactly. They're still trying to, my understanding, they're still trying to work out some where the wastewater goes. So Bryan County has to finish up their wastewater treatment plant and among maybe some other things. But as, as we shared in the last week's meeting, two of the wells have been tested. They had a 24-hour test. One came back with pretty good flows. One came back with very exceptional flows. What that means and what we were told is that the recovery and drawdown for the wells would be less than maybe initially thought they would be. But the third well, which Hofstadter Associates is in charge of digging, which But the third well, which Hofstadter Associates is in charge of digging, which I'll call it Well 3, I think they were going to do a test on that well maybe Thursday. It's just a 24-hour drawdown so they can kind of figure out how much water that well will produce and, you know, how to go configure it from there. But I think the earliest you're looking at, late July, August, September, maybe. I mean, it's quarter three for the first well that would maybe go operational, followed by well number two, and then our, what I'll call Bullet Wells, Wells 3 and 4, those will most likely be in operation sometime after January. And again, those will run, each well will talk with each other through computer programming and SCADA system. But what that means is one well may, you know, two may run at 50% capacity to lessen, you know, area impacts. But there's a science behind how they'll run the wells. But, you know, pretty interesting stuff, and those water, the groundwater sustainability program meetings are very, very interesting. As well as, I will say that Mr. Doug Lambert was, by the committee, voted as the chairman. Dr. Frank Davis, he was selected as the secretary, and then a gentleman from Bryan County is the vice chairman.
Also, the million-dollar fund, have we got that into a bank account yet, or is it still just floating out there?
Christie could probably give a better update, but it, there's back and forth with us and Bryan County. There's some issue with, I think, trying to set up an account with two entities on the name. I don't, I'm not exactly sure, so.
Correct, yes. We were, I thought we were discussing how to do that. Bryan County has since opened up their own bank account. I don't know how much of that money they have. I know they don't have the Bullock County Development Authorities portion. So we are working, Jeff is working with the attorney in Bryan County to come up with an agreement so that basically we can have one. The agreement says it needs to be one jointly managed fund, but we're working on an agreement so that we can each have a bank account, so we each have access to the money. And then we'll have some way to reconcile it all together so that it all comes back together. But we both have a way to access a portion of the money, so.
Okay.
Corey Kemp, come on down.
If y'all haven't already, oh, sorry. Corey Kemp, Director of Emergency Management. If y'all haven't already seen on Facebook, this weekend, past weekend was a phenomenal weekend for all of public safety. We had 24 people that went through a boat operation and water rescue class. Some of the people came from Statesboro Fire, Bullock County Fire, the Sheriff Department, and also EMS. This was a two-day course. About eight hours of it was a boat operation course. The rest of it was hands-on and also water safety. Not only did we practice boat operations in a controlled environment, I'm not sure if the lake has a name, but it was up in Portal. But we also went to the river where the water was a little fast and high. So we did got, we did have some real water operation tests, and we did challenge ourselves. So thank you all, department heads, for allowing us to do this, but also City of Perry, who came down and saw the class. That's it. Any questions about that? No? All right.
Any other staff comments? I'm going to put somebody on the spot. Dee, will you come up and talk to us about fireworks?
Adrian Cosby, Recreation Director. Oh, this is about that time of year, again, 4th of July. We'll be doing it this Thursday, 5:00. Blowups, firework, vendors, food, good time, music, and bring some bug spray, have a little gnats. Everybody knows gnats this time of year. So it just looked like to have a good time, have a good time celebrating 4th of July on the 3rd this year, not the 4th. So hope to see you all there.
What time we starting?
5:00. 5:00, and we should be shooting off close to 9:00.
About dark 30 then?
Dark 30, yeah, dark 30. So, any questions? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other staff comments? Hearing that, I'm going to open it up to the commissioners. I know Mr. Rushing's got something he's wanting to talk about.
Yeah, I'm going to try to make this as short and sweet as I can. I've said this 50 times, and I'm going to say it ever after every meeting, as long as I'm sitting in this chair until everybody catches on. I hear a lot about the Bullock County Board of Education. I talked to Charles Wilson today, him and the chairman was sitting back there earlier, and I told him what I was going to say. I don't know if he left on account of that or not. Me and Charles is friends. And Alicia's sitting back there, and I hate to put her on, I ain't going to put her on the spot. I'm just going to state some facts. The fact is, well, why don't you help the Board of Education out? We can't take our money and help the Board of Education out do anything because we're not part of the Board of Education. We have nothing to do with the Board of Education. We get accused of making the money off the land sales. They buy and sell land where they want, when they want, they give for it what they want. We don't never discuss it. The land they bought last time, Alicia, if she wants to elaborate on it, I told her, the fella said he sold them the land, he's got the check waiting on if they want to come back and pick it up. It has nothing to do with me. I just pass it along. All I can tell you is, is that I feel sure that everybody in this room, general public, commissioners, Board of Education people, I don't care who you are, when the whistle blew that there was going to be a big influx in the population of Bullock County, we all heard it within just a few days of each other. I told Charles Wilson this today, he'll verify it. Now, we took our whipping on the 1.5 mill increase. We took it, took it like a man. We put your fire stations in play, we put your EMS stations in play, we bought ambulances, fire trucks, we done everything. Brooklett, Georgia is getting sewer, they moving along, Register got fire, and EMS, Portal Fire EMS, Brooklett Fire EMS, everybody's done anything, everything. I know that they got to build schools. I can't tell you where they got to build them. I hear, just like Alicia said, you know, I heard this from somewhere, and I don't know because I ain't never, I ain't never been to a Board of Education meeting, other than just talking to her, which I talk to her right regular, and Charles Wilson and all of them, just in general talking. I can't tell you why they building a high school, where they building a high school at. I can't tell you the numbers. I know that, my understanding is that, I mean, I hear this, so I ain't even going to get on what I hear because you can hear anything you want to sitting up here where I'm at. Facts is what I'm trying to stick to. Now, everybody else has moved forward. Now, I know what it's going to take to build them schools. It takes money, just like it took us money, our 1.5 mill increase. I'm just guessing, flying by the seat of my breeches, if they're going to build any schools, they're going to have to go up on their school mortgage rate. But now, let me be clear, they set that. We don't have anything to do with that. The only reason you see Bullock County Board of Commissioners on your tax bill is because they use our tax office to collect it. We don't have any, not one thing, not one thing to do with the Bullock County Board of Education. Hiring, firing, spending the money, taxing y'all, nothing. But everybody says, well, help the, we can't help them. They're their own board. Y'all voted on them, y'all voted on every one of them. They hired Charles Wilson, he's the man driving the wagon. If you don't want to pay senior citizen school board taxes, you're in the wrong room. You got to go to the Board of Education. You got to petition the Board of Education. They handed the link in Franklin, it goes to the House. If it passes, we'll put, all our job is to put it on the ballot. I'll stand up, raise both hands to put it on the ballot. We do not have one thing. But I can tell you that everybody has tried, and I told Charles Wilson this today, the Board of Education has not laid a brick or stuck a shovel into dirt yet. So everybody that keeps coming up here telling us we need to see about the Board of Education, the Board of Education needs to see about the Board of Education. I didn't run for the Board of Education. Now, I took my whipping on the 1.5 mills, and we done what we had to do with the money when you give you 1.5 mills back. Now, I didn't make your taxes go down 30% like I was accused of, and I didn't get my new pickup for the sale of that land down there for that schoolhouse. I'm still driving a 14. So I'm going to have 101 Board of Education County Commission class as long as I'm sitting in this seat every time somebody mentions it. Because if you mention Board of Education, you're in the wrong room. You got to Board of Education. They build your schools, they, if they want to put trailers, portable schoolhouse trailers or whatever you want to call it behind their schools, that's their schools. If they want to build new schools, that's their job to build new schools. That's not ours. If we wanted to build your new school, we couldn't build your new school. If we wanted to put trailers behind it, we couldn't be. If we want to do anything with the Board of Education, we can't. This is the Bullock County Board of Commissioners, this is not the Bullock County Board of Education. Short of that, unless, Ms. Alicia, if you want to come up and speak as the Bullock County Board of Education member, then me and you will speak. But other than that, I've said my say.
Appreciate it.
I don't think I'm through yet. I'm going to let her have her say.
I just want to say that on probably 95, maybe 90, because you talked a little bit fast for me tonight.
Yeah, I can repeat it if I need be.
That's all. You're right. You're absolutely right. And I want to be, and I want to be clear that when I say, like, I don't, I don't mean give us money or help us, I just mean, don't give us more people yet until we can, because you know what? You're absolutely right. We got to put some shovels in the ground, and we got to lay some brick, and we got to do some things. And I mean, that's all I can say to you. I mean, you're right.
With that being said, we not going to give you no more people. People's coming here whether they got to buy the five acres at the time, like you stated earlier, and you're pretty close. And I do know that you're pretty close today, about 10,000 houses, 10,000 houses are going to be built here. So y'all going to be faced with building schools anyway, if nobody else come. So I suggest, I hate to say it, but if y'all don't know it, and y'all ain't figured it out yet, you need to get your mortgage rate right, where you can get your bonds right, where you can build these schools. But that's just Timmy, that's all I can tell you, because that's what we had to do. We've been hit, I understand, I talked to Charles Wilson today. I thought it was a $5 million deficit y'all was going to be facing. It's more like 10 that y'all just lost funding for. Not my fault, I had nothing to do with it. We just, we just went in a deficit of over $4 million for insurance hit that we had to take. We had to build a $60 million jail, and we probably got that much more coming behind us with a judicial annex. We had to do what we had to do with our mortgage rate to keep our credit score up, for our bonds, to get this done. Now, I can sit here and answer everybody's questions, but it's out of my control. I have nothing to do with Bullock County Board of Education. And so I'm not giving you no more people. The people's coming. If they buy five acres at the time, the 10,000's done coming. So give me more time, give me more time. The whistle blowed for y'all the same time it blowed for everybody else, and everybody else has undoubtedly laid some bricks and stuck a fork in the dirt or something. I ain't seen a flag or nothing go up with y'all, which is fine with me. I think y'all all do a wonderful job. I'm answering everybody else's questions out there about the Bullock County Commissioners. It's not our ball of wax. Because I could probably tell you if it was, we building a jail, we would be building something if it was up.
And I will say that you're right about that, as far as, people do need to know the difference, and people do need to understand the difference. And I know I come up here every time and say, please don't approve everything yet, please don't approve everything yet, because I'm scared to death, and that's just me coming up as a person, because I worry about, I really don't want a bunch of mobile units. I don't think any of us do. But it still could, very well, that might be what's going to have to happen. I mean, we just don't know. It's going to be when they get all these developments built, and when the people move in them, and all of this, and we have to do what we have to do. But I will, I will give you this, y'all better mark this one down, that I'm agreeing with Timmy Rushing, that.
Well, I mean, and I appreciate it, you don't know how much, but you can't, the truth don't care who tells it. But you know, there's a lot of people out there, like, and I use Randy Proctor because he come, and I'm going to continue using him till I see him in person, telling me that I had the gall to tell him on my phone at the house on Saturday, that Commissioner Rushing, what he told me up to about something, said at church, that's their business, but what he told me, he said, and Timmy Rushing had the gall to tell me that y'all don't have nothing to do with the Bullock County Board of Education. Y'all, I just stand at church house or courthouse. Do y'all, do y'all have anything? Maybe they have. I don't go to meetings, I don't know. I don't have nothing to do with Bullock County Board of Education. And so, but I don't know what it's going to take, but I can promise you that me and you and the rest of the Board of Education are going to continue to have this conversation because I totally refuse, I don't know what the rest of them up here refuse, I totally refuse to be y'all's whipping boy. You're not going to use me for an example. I had to take my licks from everybody in this audience, saying about that 1.5 mills, y'all going to have to take y'all's if you don't, we going to have this conversation every time I sit down up here. Thank you. So, and I appreciate you. I love you to death, but the facts is the facts, yeah.
Well, I really didn't mean for you to think that I was, like, beating up on you.
You're right, I bet you.
Okay. Well.
I'm trying to be a whip about something.
Don't send them my way.
They in your yard, they ain't mine.
Any other commissioner comments? Mr. Davis?
May I speak?
Absolutely.
We missed the opportunity. We had Mr. Charles Wilson here tonight. I spoke to him in the lobby also, and I asked him, was he going to speak tonight? He said, no, he was available for comments. But before we got to public comments, he left. Now, I do think, now, Mr. Rushing, I looked at it with my good eye, I looked at it with my bad eye, and I looked at it with both eyes. I think there is a correlation into the rezoning that we do and the effect it has on the public school system. Now, I'd like to see if we can't get Mr. Charles Wilson in here at the next meeting to speak on the rezones that are in front of us, the rezones we have rezoned, and any rezoning we may do in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick question, and I don't know if this would be to you or Mr. Pope or whatever, but I was asked about the funds that we received for sort and water in form of grants from the Senator's, and I just wondered if we could, anybody that elaborated on before we get, what kind of conversations?
Commissioner Mosley, yes, I'd be more than happy to answer that question, as well as Mr. Tillman can also chime in. But we did receive two earmarked funding from Senator Warnock's office, thinking FY, for FY '23 and '24, one being, I think the first one was 3 million and the second one being a million. So we have about, well, right at 4 million federal funds available to us. We just have to really know the direction we're going to go in in spending those funds. By that, with the study I mentioned earlier by Hofstadter and Associates, I've reported back to EPA, who EPA is the federal agency who, basically, they have the money, and we just have to make an application to them for the money, a justification on why, you know, what we're going to spend it on. But once that study is complete, and again, within, I would say, probably by October, we should have a pretty good idea on what options we have, and then come to the board and ask you all, you know, what is y'all's direction for us to go in? And at that time, we would be prepared to, you know, go to EPA and file for the, you know, the application for that money. So, but we have reported back and forth with EPA, and are keeping them informed of our current study and everything. I think they were, you know, in support of, obviously knowing what you're going to do with the money and what's feasible, and, because I can just tell you from the preliminary numbers I saw today, it's going to be more than 4 million. So I think you're going to have to, you know, again, you don't want to just throw money away, so we're going to have to go at it in a good, good way. But, yeah, so hopefully that answers what you're looking for.
It does, and I just wanted, one of the concerns, and I've heard from most of us, I just wanted to make sure we've moved along timely, and we don't lose the money there, because I know there must be some deadlines attached somewhere.
Yeah, and I think that it would be a real disservice to Bullock County if we just let the funds sit there and be, I guess, recalled by the federal government, when in reality, whether you believe it's pumping sewer to Bryan County or a pre-treatment facility or whatever, we have options, and we have a true need. So it's very timely funding, and so we're, I'm working, and Mr. Tillman's also working very hard to make sure we're getting that lined up for you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Comments? Just got a couple things I want to remind folks about.
Oh, I do, I do have some. I want to, can I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
I done asked Charles Wilson them questions, I can answer them for you tonight, just to let you know.
So, I just want to remind everybody, hey, 4th of July is Friday. Go out and have a good time, spend time with your family, celebrate the freedoms and the independence that we declared on the 4th of July, but be careful while you do it, please. Have fun, have lots of fun, shoot off fireworks, spend time with your neighbors, cook hot dogs, make a brisket. Don't get hurt in the process. Don't shoot your eye out with fireworks. The other thing I want to do, I just want to play this real quick and I hope that everybody can hear it.
Central Two Bullock County Fire Station 1 and Fire Station 16 are now in service.
So that was, that was last night at midnight. So I just want to take a minute to thank Chief Tapley, Brian Hendricks, Randy Newman, Warden Tool, all the inmates from Bullock Correctional Institute that made that happen. I, I've said this before and I'll say it again, you know, there were a lot of people that told us that we could not bring these fire stations online in the time that we had. We did it. And we did it with the cooperation of the staff and this community, and I appreciate We now have fire protection that covers not just the 5 Mile District, but we have expanded fire protection into areas of this county that never had fire protection before. And that, that, that's important. That's part of that responsible growth plan that we keep talking about again and again. So with that, we also had graduation last week for 11 new firefighters that are working in Bullock County. You know, we, we made the approval a couple of months ago to bring on 36 new firefighters. We've hired 30 of those already, there's six more coming. So that is, that is a good thing, I, I'm proud of that fact that we are able to provide that fire protection, expand that EMS protection, which decreases response times, which helps to improve outcomes for, for people, for our neighbors, when they have the bad things happen. And I appreciate the work that y'all have done to make that happen. I know there's been some long days, some long nights, some long weekends to make it happen. When I went out to Fire Station 16 yesterday, it looked like one of those home remodeling shows the day before they do the open house, where they were trying to get everything done at the last minute, get it clean and make it nice, and, and, and they did it. And they worked together to make it happen, and I'm grateful for that. Just want to remind everybody that the 4th of July is a federal holiday, county offices will be closed on the 4th. James has already talked about the joint meeting that we're going to be having at the Oak Room at O'Geechey Tech on the, the night, at 17, or excuse me, at 5:00 in the evening. And then, what else did I forget here? I think that's everything.
Savannah, I mean Chairman.
Oh, thank you.
That one, I think, to the public.
It's open to the public. It is open to the public. That's why we're having it at the Oak Room, so we can try to accommodate everybody that wants to come, so. And we'll, we'll, we will do our best to record it. I don't know if we'll be able to livestream it because the, the internet out there is kind of wonky sometimes, but if nothing else, they'll record it and post it after the fact. And then the last thing that, thank you for reminding me, Dow, you can get a homestead exemption through the 7th of July, okay? So you, really, you have three more working days to do it. Last report that I got from Bobby Fisher today was that there have been about 400 people in the last week that have signed up for homestead exemption. You still have time to go in and do the paperwork. If you're not sure if you have a homestead exemption, please swing by the tax assessor's office and they will verify it for you. It will take you about five minutes to fill out your paperwork, bring your driver's license. That being said, I think that's everything we have. We are going to go into executive session, I'll read all the song and dance here in a minute. There is no planned action to be taken after we come back in from executive session. So that being said, I must now call, call for a motion to adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provisions of OCGA 50-14-3B2 and OCGA 50-14-3B1B and other applicable laws pursuant to the advice of County Attorney Jeff Akins for the purpose of discussing personnel, real estate matters, and possible litigation. Thank y'all. Now, we need a motion. In a second.